I want to remind everybody that, excuse me, East Sac County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society and hopefully we'll keep that in mind as we go through our meeting today. We don't have to submit an agenda at all today?
No.
Okay, so I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
It looks like you two are going to be doing the brunt of the work today, so. Motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Okay, then we'll move on to consent items and John, do you want to take over there?
Yeah. The minutes of the May 27th meeting. If there's any questions about those, let me know. The financial reports, um, does expect that the vehicle report looked really good compared to two years, or yeah, two years ago, and the May one is still good. It's still $300,000 better off, um, putting out to 415. And it did some timing things with paying some bills. And actually, the due bills look smaller than we expected, so it looks like we're going to kind of hold this trend, which is good news. So, that would be my comment on the financial report. On the, on the bills, I didn't single out any bill to bring to your attention. I just, in general, you're going to see some supply orders for next year for both classroom and custodial that you're not used to seeing. You'll see some textbook orders, um, some library books purchased. So, other than those things, the bills were pretty much customary, and I'm just answering any questions or anything you had highlighted on those.
The one-to-one technology and the middle school would be the other.
Yeah.
That's the big 138,000, is that what they?
Yeah, 138 there and then, 35 to RIS.
I have one question on the front here. Burton and Tracy, uh, Burton, E. Tracy, excuse me. 4,800, is that the total amount or is that the second half?
That's the second payment.
Okay.
And I'll address that a little bit when we approve the audit today.
Alright.
Because that, that is more than our contract at the moment.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Anything else on there that I have any questions about, I guess, so.
On the utilities, John, I just, just look at this. The City of Lakeview, it was 4,300, Sac was only 2,100. What, does Sac, does Lakeview double that time or, you know?
I didn't look because 4,300 is pretty common.
Well, I think if you, if you look in the, the next page back, not to interrupt, but, Mid-American Energy is, um.
Yeah, that's true.
Also added in.
City of Lakeview has electricity on there.
City of Lakeview, yeah. Or City, City of Sac City wouldn't have the electricity on there, so.
But Sac City does have coal or natural gas on there and City of Lakeview does not.
Wouldn't.
That's a lot of those energy though, which doesn't look too small.
It should be.
Alright, I entertain a motion to approve the consent items. It would be the minutes, the financial report, and the build on account of 379, 873, and 11 cents. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent report.
Um, the only break, I agree, just plain is we had, um, our seven days of professional development and then school was out, and they went extremely well. Um, we were fortunate enough with our five first-year teachers that we have for next year at the high school, that all of them were present for all of those days with our family. So, their comments at the end of that were, were that they couldn't imagine going to a school and starting as a brand-new teacher with no experience and not having had some of that experience. So, that sounded like it was all working every couple years. One of the things that happened is they just, at least can meet a few people, know sort of the way around the buildings. The two English teachers that are new for next year have both been in another half-day and are working on developing curriculum yet, so PD went very well.
It's good to hear. Anything else?
No, nothing here.
Any other questions for me? Good. Okay, we'll go to unfinished business and we'll discuss superintendent evaluation. Barb and I met, was it Wednesday?
I think we met.
Wednesday, uh, I don't know. Barb and I met over noon, uh, one day last week and I had a good conversation. Um, all of the, all of the evaluations were pretty, pretty equal in that everybody thought that Barb was doing a good job. Um, you know, one of the things that we discussed was sometimes there are comments on the evaluations and, and sometimes those comments are derived from maybe one or just hearsay from, from the district, from one constituent, and, you know, they're not always correct, and so, some of those, some of those comments, I think Barb was kind of not in agreeance with. And, and you know, if it's just one person, you can understand that. There's a lot of people in this district and a lot of people that Barb works with, both teachers and staff and constituents of the district. So, you know, if one person is upset, I, I think that's, I think, I think Barb's doing a pretty good job if, if you only hear from one person, so. That was, that was some of the stuff that we discussed. And, you know, actually, that was the first time that I'd ever actually really gone through the process, so it was a pretty good experience for me too, and so, we'll.
We thought it was interesting because Chris is a former student at mine, and now he was sitting down with me to do the question.
When I was, when I was 16, she was my teacher, so, uh, so yeah, we thought that was kind of interesting, but, but yeah, I think, I think we're, we're all pretty happy with how things are going in the next couple of years. Hopefully, things should keep going, going well, so. Did you guys have any questions about that or any comments that you wanted to add to?
Barb, any say?
The only thing I might comment on is in your board packet are, is a document that you adopted three years ago that were the board's goals. I would say that based on what we do this summer, the developing those or leaving them the way they are or instituting some new ones, I think you should expect me to develop some goals related to my work and my job to whatever, that align with whatever those district goals are. And I think we talked a little bit about that at the evaluation, that whatever we've said, whatever you said as a board should also then be reflected then in whatever my job improvement goals are, so.
This doesn't really pertain to the superintendent evaluation, but as far as goal-setting those, I guess, I'm being pretty, still somewhat new to this. I've heard of ways that they've kind of done it in the past. Is that what we're doing today or is that pretty much what was presented last time? What can we do, I can't remember, come together as a board and really discuss?
I think the item on the district for board goals is just to open that discussion up and get things started. Let me see what was in place three years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I think what I wrote was just simply that they're there and I'm not recommending that that necessarily be the stuff, but just a reminder that this is what the board's criticals are from the last three years.
Right.
But to now start thinking about when working off of the next couple of board meetings.
Right. I mean, initially, when I, you know, a couple of years ago, we had some bigger goals, kind of, that we were talking about, so I love the session where we could do that.
We could do a work session and just specifically talk about that. If, if that's something that we wanted to do, like.
That's fine, I think.
Okay, so, uh, nothing else there. Uh, let's move on to new business, discuss and/or approve fees and handbooks. Um, and you've got that in your packet, page seven has the school fees, is it just seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And on that page, you can see that there's sort of a, there's a history from 2012, 13 to the present time. And if you remember last winter, we, I came to you and we needed to raise lunch fees. That's, that was mandated by state guidelines and so, some of the food service fees are being raised a bit this year at this time, again, simply because we're being, it's requested by the Department of Ed and that School Nutrition Division that we raised also. You can see what the differences look like. Kindergarten through fourth grade lunch, um, will go up a little bit, fifth through eighth grade lunch, and ninth through 12th grade lunch. Adult lunch will go up, adult salad bar, and then we can take a look down, scan through that next step, may all remain the same. Newsletter price remains the same. We probably could take preschool off from that list beginning next year because that's the free public access preschool that the state funds our district for, but because it had been a pay-per-child before, it just serves to show you the history of what that looked like.
Was that four-year-olds?
That's four-year-olds. Yeah, that's a four-year-old program. Athletic, adult athletic passes, we're recommending a $5 increase. The family athletic pass, $5 increase, and that would be up for increases and fees.
Yeah, it seems like that's all pretty common and, uh, I don't know, do you guys have any discussion on that? I think, I think everything there looks fine to me.
The only thing I would say is, um, I understood the reasoning and logic why we have to raise lunch prices. I got it. Um, it seems like in our nutrition fund, we're, we've got a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, so, I think if we raise fees, probably we'll have more money unless we buy just eggs and chicken, I guess, but, um, I'd say we probably need to sit down some form of time and look at, you know, how that money's getting spent or how to spend that money. Kind of, we've done a lot of updating the kitchen and, and things like that. I guess maybe looking along the lines of, and I don't even, I haven't even eaten at school, I haven't heard anything for 10 years about it, but, you know, maybe something about how we spend the money on what we're offering, I guess. We're just going to keep making money, maybe we can have more choices, things like that, so. Had to look into that or have you guys looked into it or something?
Social media.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Brown. I think that's something that we've talked about before, maybe updating our equipment. And I think we've got $225,000 in our account quite regularly, so. So, you guys ready to make a motion on that? On this, on the fees as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we're going to motion in a second to accept the, um, school fees as presented, 15, 16 annual fees as presented. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to administrator contracts.
Just have a motion. Did you have any questions on the handbooks?
Oh, yeah, exactly, I got that one, I'm sorry.
Need a separate motion to approve the handbook issue?
And like I wrote in the packet, yeah, the handbook changes are only because of other policy changes. Of course, some things, the technology that our school attorney has suggested, we've added some language to the student and staff handbook related to social media, so.
Motion to approve the staff handbook for 2015, 16, and also the student handbook for 2015, 16.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve the handbooks as presented, with the changes presented. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thanks, John. Um, okay, well, now we'll move on to discuss and/or approve administrator contracts and page eight here in your packet you guys have in front of you. John, you want to talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah. Um, the salary, you know, pretty much self-explanatory. I have the proposed salary for 15, 16, the contract length, and then the notes which explains how it changes from last year. Elementary principal, 4% increase, just like the staff received, and an increase in contract length to 220 days to match the other two principals.
Is that seven days that we added, John?
Yes.
Six, seven.
Seven. Um, middle school principal, 220 days, two-year contract, and salary freeze per, per his request. Mr. Litterer, high school principal, same contract, 220 days, two years, 4% increase, and then.
I'll, I'll talk about Barb.
Superintendent, so go ahead.
At our, at the evaluation, Barb and I discussed a little bit, her contract, and how the first year, we wanted to, you know, we wanted to get somebody in place and we were happy to get Barb in place and that we just picked a number out and, and decided that we'd give her, that we would offer 70% of that number. Barb and I talked at the evaluation that that number's pretty low for superintendent, superintendent of the district our size. So, John did some work and looked at the average salary for superintendent of the district our size, and that's $138,500 roughly, and, and the number that we were using was $130,000. So, we, we thought it would be fair to give Barb 70% of what the average superintendent gets, even though we think Barb's, um, an average. And then, and then we also discussed paying her health insurance. And I wish I could tell you what she said about it, but I'm not going to do that. It's kind of funny if you want to talk to me after the meeting, I'll.
If I can share with you behind the wheel, it's like I'm on Medicare.
That's exactly what she told me, so.
This is the benefit that you have, I guess, and, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's the reason for the increase in, in Barb's, Barb's contract, so.
We would propose that also be a two-year contract, and our cost for her insurance then would be $300 per month in lieu of the health insurance. The health insurance would have cost us, family health insurance is around $20,000 for us, so.
I was going to ask that about the, the 4% increases. Is it out for both Mike Fisher and Kevin?
Mm-hmm.
Does that take in, in account the increase in Mike Fisher?
Yeah.
Is that how?
Full package, like we bargained with you, probably a teacher.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve the administrator contracts as presented. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, so now we'll move on to the audit. Um, John, you or Barb?
I got it. Um, this year ends in six days and we have last year's audit finally, so. This audit was a little more extensive than the typical audit because we received over a half million dollars in federal money, so it adds some of the requirements that our auditors are required to do, and that would, that would be why that $4,800 wasn't $3,600 or whatever we would have expected. So, a little more extensive. The findings are very similar to the past several years. So, good news is revenues were up, expenses were down. So, our general fund balance went up about 9%. So, a number I always give you is the solvency ratio, which is our unassigned fund balance. So, we get cash we have in the bank after all the bills are paid at the end of June, divided by total revenues, and ours is 9%. That's probably what the state would call target range. It's not too high by any means. I mean, I think once you get above about 15%, they start questioning that, but, um, we don't want to be down below 5% anymore, so. Those numbers are on pages 16 and 18. And then if you look back to page 52, that's where they get into all of our findings. Good news was they did not find any issues of non-compliance, so we're in compliance with all the statutes. They made their three internal control recommendations that they've made for several years, and that segregation of doing. They prepare our financial statements for us, so they come in on that, and then we do have the signature stamp of the board president that we use on occasion for things that are approved by the board or for checks, and they would prefer the board president come in and sign everything.
And they told me that one, or did not, yeah?
And Chris was interviewing. So, um, other than that, the budget was okay in total. We were over in some areas, under in other areas. In total, we were, we were in compliance. And then there's an enrollment adjustment that we'll make on this year's enrollment. We counted a couple of kids, um, both on our in-house enrollment and on our tuition out, so they got counted twice and have to fix that, so. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and if I can't answer them, I'll get the answer for you. Or if something comes up later, give me a call.
I thought everything looked good, and you know what, and it's always a positive when your revenues go up and your expenses go down. And that makes me feel even better about keeping the tax rate even this year, so. Any comments on the audit? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the audit for the 2013, 14 year, right?
Yep.
2014 audit, yeah.
And if that motion, yeah?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve the 2014 fiscal year, 2014 audit. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, now we'll move on to discuss and/or approve technology contracts, and you guys can see and hear the, the work that John and Barb and whoever else was involved in this. That, that probably did a lot of the work. There's a, I mean, this thing is extensive. If, if you took the time to read through all of this, there's a lot of work going on. One thing that I would say, uh, in just my opinion, but I want to put it out there, is, you know, over the past, I suppose, three to five years, we've really made big strides in, in all of our schools to become more tech-savvy and, you know, I wouldn't say that, that changing would, would slow that down, but, but I can't imagine that changing would make it better. Um, and, you know, just by, just by looking at the two, comparing the two bids, you know, it looks to be like Robert is much more, I don't know, not necessarily qualified, but experienced, yeah, I think, experienced in what we're doing here, um, so.
I would want to share one thing, and that's simply that, um, the due date on the materials was last Friday, and on Monday, I C D turned in a packet that was late, that was in addition to what you're seeing right here. So, John, I felt comfortable with both understanding that if it's late, it's late, but I did contact our school attorney Danielle and just asked her opinion because I said, this is probably one of those situations where I want to make sure the board knows that by us not including that in the packet, that it was the legal thing to do. And she said, my opinion is it would not be included because the date and time have been clear to everyone. So, there would be some additional materials that, that are not included in this, but legally, they can't be included because they didn't meet the due date. In the packet information, you can see that my recommendation is that we continue with Robert as the provider of IT services for the district, and I reemphasize what Chris said, that if you just say, there you go, now we were getting ramped up for, not, not me, but other people were getting ramped up for one-to-one at the high school. So, we're sort of over that first bubble, and now doing the same thing at the middle school. And we also have, not a large, but a small branch at the elementary for additional iPads for both buildings. So, in total, when you think about it, the district has made a huge, in about 24 months, we'll have a huge leap in just the number of devices that are being used in the district. And, um, it, it would be a bit scary not to know that the person who knows this inside out is definitely be there. So, my recommendation is that you accept a, um, vote from Robert.
So.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and accept, a motion in a second to accept Robert Schuman's technology contract. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Um, okay, now we'll move on to discuss and/or approve board goals. And we talked a little bit about this already, and they're in here.
It would probably be fairly easy to look at those and see that they're general and they're broad, and they're probably very close to what the board decided in the future to continue with as board goals, but my recommendation is simply at this point that they're here for you to remember what you adopted in July, um, three years ago, and that we come back to those in July with either new language or entirely new goals, and maybe we even found out a few specifics that would be measurable in terms of, so what would you like to see happen? And that would not be typical for school boards to do. Or you can develop the goals and I can bring back to you some ideas about some measurable results related to those, and again, build what you expect from me around what those board goals are as well. So, again, I'm just here to start the conversation.
I disagree that they're there. Is this something to kind of build off of?
Yeah. And it looks like we're right in line with timeframe of a few years ago. Your board goals are very different than our student achievement goals. Those come from our PSYAC committee, and they're recommended by the PSYAC to the board, and then the board adopts the student achievement goals for our comprehensive, um, C plan. So, again, not really intending any discussion other than here they are and start thinking about them and just like what you'd like to do with them, so.
Okay, and I think we'll pass that on to Jay and Lisa and make sure they understand that, and, um, maybe we can get a work session together before our meeting in July. We'll see how that goes. Any other discussion on the board, board goals?
The only thing I would say is there may be some board members coming up. Should they maybe include in that? Hey, I'm not saying I don't want to be in the meeting, we're just saying.
Oh, sure.
For another month. We can still talk about it next, you know, come up some ideas.
That's not something that we have to have done in July, is it?
Probably maybe recommend sitting back, putting something together that any, if there are any board members.
Can be a perfect session.
Yeah, we don't approve until they're on the board.
But I think we, like, we discussed the work, a possible work session to kind of, I would like that, and then we can have something to kind of present, should there be new members.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, um, we'll leave that. Discussing and/or approve SAC community center agreement. And before we, I don't know, maybe I should, I'll do that after the meeting, never mind.
I think the agreement's very similar to the prior years. It's still $15,000 school contribution, and for that, we have use of the facilities, normal operating hours, and, um, our employees get a discount, I don't know how we take advantage of that, but they do, and we can schedule activities, or that type of thing. So, the agreement's similar, it's still $15,000 with no monetary change, and we typically write that check July first and get it to them.
I have a question about swimming, just because of the way I asked it, finally. Is that ever going to be something that we can reintroduce back into our, to the, to the.
I think, and Barb would have to help me with this, but I think there's a lot of rules about you can teach swimming.
Certified lawyer.
We have to have certified white cards, yeah.
And I don't know if we're going to.
I just wonder, I mean.
I think that's going to hold up for that.
It's just such a pretty cool thing for us to have available.
So, what's the, what's the swim team? Is there an extracurricular swim team? And maybe somebody out here can, or Dale, I see you're shaking.
I'm playing with the school.
Has nothing to do with the school, right?
Right.
But there is one.
There is.
Okay.
We also send high school kids, some of them down to Carroll, too. I think that's from down there, too.
Yeah, because we don't have our own, um, school.
If your PE instructor would need a WSI to.
Tell them to do stuff.
Yeah, instruct someone.
You got to.
Come on.
Get all summer.
Basically, it would have to be probably our middle school because they're the ones that would be using it, so.
Right.
And we talked about this probably five, six years ago. I remember having this discussion before at coordinating, one of our PE teachers at that time were WSI licensed.
And that's just not something you just go add, you know?
But at any rate, does that take a lot to get?
I don't think it's ridiculous.
All eight years, lifeguard basically, you get.
Yeah.
If you make, if you make a lifeguard, you take.
You can, yeah, to be a lifeguard, you can, I mean, it'd be easy to get that, but you could not be an official instructor, you'd have to, WSI, which is going to take a little bit longer, and then you have to teach so many hours of swimming each year to keep that up.
And that's what you're saying we have to have in order to provide?
Provide instruction. So, there's two different things here, a lifeguard. A lifeguard, they take classes, it's about two weeks long, and costs $140, $150. And a W S I is several classes, more than that, and that costs probably $400. So it's not difficult to get, but I mean, somebody would have to.
And here would be the other thing, we have, one of our daughters was a W S I licensed or certified. But I think the other thing we have to have is somebody who wants to do that. I mean, she really wanted that, so it was part of some of her work. And when I think about our P E teachers, we'd be asking somebody who potentially doesn't even like water. I mean, I don't know that, but it is just a little bit different.
Right, I think we can try to do some thinking about it, though. It was something that we had always offered before, when the kids, I know, I think, middle school was on board. And it's just, it's kind of a neat thing, in my opinion, to.
It's unique.
For kids that aren't, you know, don't have any other access to swim lessons.
You're partially right.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to, we didn't approve the contract.
We have, we have not.
Sorry. I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with SAC Community Center.
So moved.
We got a motion in a second to approve the agreement between the SAC Community Center and the ESAC County School District. All in favor, SAC?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Discussing and/or approve 28E for tag. John and Barb, you guys want to talk about that a little bit? What, Barb?
Yep, we have continually agreed with the Newel Fonda, share a tag teacher 50% time. I know we've had discussions about tag and about needing more time. We don't have anyone on our faculty that has a tag endorsement. I've done just a little exploring, but not like an email to all of the teaching staff, just asking a few individuals that are interested in acquiring a tag endorsement, because honestly, we could probably use this halftime person plus a little bit of time. We also talked with a neighboring district and thought we had someone that we could hire for a day a week to possibly work in just one of our elementary buildings, that would then free up the halftime person. But that fell through. So currently, I would recommend that we enter this agreement with Newel Fonda for 50% time.
This is just a one-year agreement, always, right?
Yep.
So moved.
We got a motion in a second to approve the 28E with Newel Fonda Community Schools per tag. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
So it's just an issue of finding that person, there's just isn't somebody, we don't need somebody full-time. It's an issue, it's just not being able to find.
We probably could use a full-time person, honestly. But finding a full-time person that has skills for the elementary kids and tag and secondary kids is where the dilemma is.
Do middle districts have one per elementary and one per high school?
Um, districts have, in our Congress, for instance, it's everything from less time than halftime to every district that has two full-time people. But it was a consolidated district that recently consolidated, when they came together, they had both tag teachers. And then have one that serves more in the elementary capacity and one more in the middle school, high school.
They have to do that because they don't have them on board already.
Yep.
So is that something that you think that we should consider for future? And should we, um, a full-time be tag teacher? Is that something you should?
But would be ideal, trying to think forward and then thinking budget as well. And we had someone on staff was interested in acquiring the tag endorsement. And the tag endorsement is fairly extensive. So part of it is just the commitment to the number of credits it takes for that endorsement. If we had someone on staff that was interested in having it, as we move here in the next two to four years, and guessing will have decreased enrollment, we're going to need to continue to always be looking at, so who we have on staff, it might make sense then to have someone that could move into a part-time situation where they're still fully employed, but they might have a new assignment for a couple of weeks a day or something. But it's a pretty big financial commitment on the part of a teacher to pay the necessary credits. And we have someone on staff that would have been a former tag teacher, which is a full-time middle school teacher who is good at that position and needs to stay there.
Okay, move on to discuss and/or approve board policy updates.
Yep, policies that we're asking for changed in are Policy 106, which is anti-bullying and harassment. The language change in that is related to social media. That was a recommendation by our attorney. Policy 415, and it's the regulation, Regulation 1 for that policy, and the policy is appropriate. Oh, I forgot the word, use, there are issues, use of computer network and the internet on the employee's side. And again, it was language related to the use of social media. And then Policy 503.1 is a broad basic policy in all school districts for student conduct. And our attorney asked that we add the language related to state and federal regulations. And that's in regard to the fact that students and/or employees take photographs and then send those electronically. Now we're talking about state and federal regulations being broken in. She has had some experience in this field of social media with other school districts, and just said, here's the language that we're asking schools to use. I did just read Iowa, School Administrators of Iowa Monthly Update, and that attorney recommended the same language changes, I noticed, and it's not our attorney. So it was good to see that there's some continuity across the state related to that. Those pieces of language then are also changed in our handbooks, which you just quoted on. So that was part of what that language change was. And then the last one is Policy 505.5 Graduation Requirements. After we had our, during our site visit, it was noted to us that our students who offer the 32-credit diploma, generally those are our flexed out students, need to have required, need P E as one of their required credits. So we added P E as a required credit, and they will start P E next year. So any student that's full-time there will take P E as well as all other students do. And we dropped an elective credit, so we maintained the 32-credit diploma. We just substituted credits there, so that's the change in that policy. And I recommend that you approve all four of these, please.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the board policies as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, and we'll move on to resignations. Looks like we have one. That's, that's too bad. She's a hell of a good lady.
How many years is she been here? A lot?
A lot.
I think she's maybe 19, don't quote me on that, something like that.
The kids are definitely going to miss her.
So the resignation is from Margine Rigel, who is the secretary at the Waldorf Elementary building. And Mike, anyone who worked anywhere for a long time, and Margine as well, it wasn't an easy decision for her to make, but just based on some family thing, they're taking place of her family. Everybody has to take a look at that and sit back and decide what they can do. So regrettably, I would ask you to accept Margine's resignation.
I'll make that, will you?
Okay, we got a motion in a second to accept Margine Rigel's resignation. Make sure we let her know that we appreciate everything that she's done for the kids in the school. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, then we've got, move on to contracts. Looks like we've got some coaching contracts here to.
Yep, and I'll make the comment about teaching contracts, because I don't forget to say it. We have, as a result of transfers in the building, we ended the school year with the need for a first-grade teacher in the Waldorf building and a transitional kindergarten teacher for the district, who is actually housed in this building, but it's a district position. And we interviewed, we advertised for elementary license, early childhood, early childhood special ed and reading. We just decided we might as well advertise for exactly what we were looking for and see what applications we got. We had two applicants that had all of those endorsements. One of them was a, had finished her first year of teaching, and the other one had finished her 10th year of teaching. We interviewed both of them. We've offered both of them contracts, and they're in the process of being released from their districts. And I just got under their, each of their district on site yesterday and looked to see what action their boards had taken. And they're advertising those positions in those districts. And both of them have announced that they will be released. Their next board meetings are the middle of June for those two districts. So you'll have a person with 10 years of experience coming in, middle of July. So hopefully, in July board meetings, we're going to be able to recommend to you those two people. But we're sitting right now waiting because we need their releases before we can formally have them sign a contract. But we think we.
Do you have a lot of applicants, or?
We did have quite a few applicants, but very few that had all the post-grad credentials. And in fact, when I saw those, Mike and I talked about, hmm, that kind of makes it easy to decide who to interview. And everything about them was good, and their interviews were very, very good, so.
Yeah, actually, I mean, it sounds like it was positive as.
Perfect, right.
We got two people who we really were looking forward to, and so that's a good thing.
Coaching recommendations, I don't know if you can take these individually, or how you'd like to do them. Larry's recommendations for J V boys track, Ms. Kyle, I'm going to probably mispronounce his name, Slaughter.
Slaughter?
He's the, he's the community center.
He volunteered a little bit for us this year.
Worked with hurdles?
I personally think he's doing a good job over there. It seemed like everything was picking up, so that's good.
Good, everything you've done, so I mean, he's really been involved. Has that a lot going on with his career?
J V boys basketball, which would be Kevin Croker, who then he volunteered last year. And the assistant boys basketball coach had resigned, so Kevin has applied for that position. Middle school girls' basketball, Greg Baez, who will be a full-time P E teacher for us. And the last positions are the shared, a shared high school girls' basketball position, shared between Mike and Sherry. And I did include in your board packet for that position for Mike and Sherry, that policy that we already adopted a few years ago about administrator employment. And I underlined that sentence, that really is kind of the corrects of the policy when it comes to what you decide to do. And basically, the policy said that the board can approve employment outside of their major contracts. So that, these are up for discussion. So I make those recommendations that we have with Larry. And Larry's here, if you need to ask him any questions, I'll give him a second.
Yeah, so do we have any discussion on any of these?
I'm happy with what I see. I mean, I think it all looks good.
If you don't mind, I just want to explain what we're looking at. It'd be a one-year trial basis, to see, you know, with Mike being an administrator, to see how things would, would work. And basically, it'd be a co-coach situation. So if Mike had some administrative duties to do after school or something, Sherry would be considered, you know, the person in charge. If, if you guys had to leave early or something, and Mike, Mike had to stay back for games, Sherry would go, and, you know, it'd be a co-coach situation. It'd be, you know, a trial basis and see what the board would think after one year, and we'd go from there. Personally, I just think that's what's best for our girl program. We look at 40 years of experience between the two coming in compared to the other interviews we went through. The experience just wasn't there. I'm not saying they couldn't do the job, but I'm just looking at what I felt was best for our girl basketball program. And that's why I'm here.
And what we want for the, for them, I, I kind of feel the same way, Larry. It's, I think it's something that we could really pride ourselves on, having, bringing that much experience to.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think it's a big deal to have experience in the basketball program. But I also think that the 400 kids that are under his wing are very important also. And, you know, I would say that we have a policy in place, and I don't, I don't, uh, I would vote no for Mike Fisher being a shared basketball coach right now.
Some of the policy that we have, is it, I mean, obviously, we can love this down or not. Who would be the one later on, like you just were saying, it's going to be a trial thing if it happens?
You know, that'd be totally agree if you want Barb enlightened, then want the board to be involved. Because Barb's going to have a lot to say on, you know, whether Mike can handle it as an administrator.
Well, you should, in my opinion, you'd be the only one that, you know, would know whether it's happening or not. I wouldn't have a clue whether you can do both of the jobs. So I'm okay with it as long as.
With a plan.
As long as there's a plan in place and everybody knows.
And I would, I would agree with that, because I think that the concern, I understand, I understand your concern, Chris, completely. And I agree with that. But I think that because it's been brought to us like this, that it's something that we could definitely try.
I want the board to understand, I don't try to undermine the board. The only reason I'm here is because in the policy, it said without board approval. And that's why I'm here, to see if it is a possibility.
My vote would be yes.
I think we've had our discussion, and if we want to make a motion, that'd be, this is the time to do it.
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts that are listed out. The five contracts that are listed in our vote packet.
I'll say that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, before we vote, I need to know how we, we, this, obviously, these five contracts will be listed as up for vote. The shared co-coach, are we understanding that I should put something in the minutes if this is a one-year contract? Otherwise, these other contracts are continuum contracts.
Yeah, that's a good.
So I need to know how.
Yeah, and the other one we talked about would be the assistant and the head. We just take those two, put them together, and split it right down the middle.
I already did that.
Okay.
In the package, sorry.
As far, as far as compensation, that was what we talked about.
Yeah, exactly.
So what do you think as far as communication should be between Kelly and Barb? I mean, as far as what that plan looks like for?
That's fine, and I do believe it should be separated out like Tom was saying, that's going to be a one-year trial.
Yep, the motion will be to approve the five contracts and the co-coaching contracts. If approved, will be a one-year contract. That's all we can do.
I'm going to ask a question, because if there is a no vote, do each of those need to be?
If this doesn't pass, we'll come back individually to the other contracts. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second to accept the contracts as presented along with the verbiage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Nay? Motion carried.
Here's to.
Okay, so now we have to discuss future agenda items and set another date.
In July, our contract for our audit ran out with this audit. So I requested a new three-year proposal from them. And I'll bring that to you in July. I think a three or $400 increase, just, you know, like everything else. So we'll bring that to you for approval in July. What else can we have for July?
Our board goals written out, it's the second thing. I think the last couple of years, July board meetings, and they were not very long agendas for the last couple of years. So just to make sure we weren't forgetting something that we need to do in July.
Can you do a plan on work sessions somehow for August-ish? Does that sound good, or you want to do it before, you want to do it in between the July and August?
I think after the July meeting, it'd probably be a better plan than what David and Rich talked about. I'm going July 20th through the 27th, which is two Mondays. And I think Barb would prefer I was here for the meeting.
Yeah.
So, let's just set dates.
I'm only going there here for July.
Would you be interested in a Wednesday meeting, like the 29th? Could you give us a date, get ready after you're back at least?
Sure. At 6:00?
And a plan for the high school, and if the halls are a mess, we'll plan something else, you know?
No, we got to stay here for another little bit because it's pouring outside, so.
Yeah, Stacy, what did your radar say?
I just got a message from the comm center, says that they're calling for nickel-sized hail in 60 minutes.